Good evening, welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission meeting of August 28th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any justice at all.
Thank you. Jeff, would you take the ball?
Sure. Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
And Commissioner Hopkins is absent, Commissioner Voight is absent, Chairman Fox?
Here.
And we have a Court of the Planning Commission also is David Campbell today.
All right, thank you. Next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda for Planning Commission, August 28th, 2014.
I move to add an amendment to the agenda, do you do that?
Yep, you can second it and then...
Okay, second?
Yep, and then are there any change?
Sure.
To please make a change on the discussion of pending amendments to section 5.23, to change that to 5.26, covering signs.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion furious. We have item five, no more meeting minutes, or no meeting minutes. We have a call to the public with no public, no public hearings. We'll move to item 8A, which is discussion on the pending amendments to section 5.26, signs. Then I guess we'll turn this over to Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. What the Planning Commission has before them is a memorial summarizing a series of proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, and those amendments are pertaining to certain sections of our sign regulations within section 5.26 of the zoning ordinance. As the Planning Commission may recall, this started back in the spring. We wanted to look at certain areas of our sign regulations, particularly sign regulations that they pertain to home occupations, portable slash temporary signs in our Heartland Village area, the signs for agritourism and commercial agriculture, and finally, signs for donor recognition. So we've had a series of conversations with our ordinance review committee over the last few months, and we've come to some final recommendations on three of the four. The fourth is the commercial agriculture one, and that one sort of evolved. It started out as just looking at agritourism, and now it's kind of evolved into commercial agriculture. And so we're doing a little more research on that one because that one has a lot of implications. Obviously, we have a lot of agriculturally zoned property in the township, and the Right to Farm Act comes into play to some degree, so we want to make sure we have that one sealed up, so we're spending a little more time on that one. But that being said, we should have some recommendations on that one to you hopefully at the next meeting. I think we're pretty close to where we want to be on that one. So once we have, and the other component to this is the Township Board wants to discuss part of the donor recognition signs, particularly the idea of fundraising status signs. So for example, I think we've all seen in our travels, a United Way sign with a thermometer next to it, and they're trying to raise $50,000, and the thermometer's telling you that they're at $35,000. Heartland Township's zoning ordinance currently does not specifically allow something like that. And so the question that's now going to get to our Township Board at their first meeting in September, this coming Tuesday, is, does the board want to allow something like that? We've kind of drawn the line with some other off-premises signs, and that's what this would be. The United Way does not necessarily have an office in Heartland Township. They're not necessarily hosting an event in the township, they're hosting a fundraiser, and so they're wanting to put up a sign for it, so that's a bit of a different animal. And the board has to decide, are we going to allow those types of signs in the township, depending on where they come out in September, then we will then be tasked with, okay, if we know that they want them, then how do, what's the procedure for getting them approved? So that may go along with donor recognition, and once we know what direction the board wants to go, then we'll be back to the Planning Commission with some more information on that, again, most likely at one of our September meetings. So for tonight, this is a discussion item, get the board's, excuse me, the Planning Commission's feedback on three of these. And hopefully in September, what we'll be doing is bringing the remaining ones to you to set a public hearing. So the ones that are before you tonight are what the Planning Department staff and the ordinance review committee have come up with with respect to home occupation signage, temporary portable signs in the LC and the STR zoning districts. Those are the two zoning districts primarily within our village area and within the Partialville Settlement area. And the third being the recommended language for donor recognition signs. And if you want, I can go through them, give you a brief overview, or, okay? So the first is for home occupation signs. So right now, a home occupation is permitted in a Heartland Township. A home occupation would be if you are running a business out of your house, and that business is incidental to your house, it's accessory to your house. So if you were running, if you were an engineer working out of your house, or if you were an attorney, or you were doing tax services, and you still live in the house, and the primary purpose of the house is to be your principal residence, but you're also running a home office out of there too, that is permitted in Heartland Township. But then the question was, should the people who do that be allowed a certain limited amount of signage on their property to identify themselves if they want to put out a sign that says, you know, Smith Accounting Services? Should they be allowed to do that? And what the ordinance review committee came up with is some options that would allow that on a very limited basis. One would be a limited window sign that would occupy no more than 25% of one window. Another would be a sign on the exterior of the building that would be no larger than two square feet. It would be one or the other, you wouldn't be able to have both. Or if your property is zone CA, Conservation Agriculture, so those are some of our large properties in our more rural areas, then folks in that situation would be allowed to have a freestanding sign out in their front yard of a limited size and of a tasteful design, identifying the business that they conduct within their home. So there are size provisions, there are design standards. These signs would not be required to get a sign permit. They'd be exempt from requiring a sign permit so long as they meet these basic criteria. And as part of this, we are going to have to amend the prohibition on pole signs to be able to say that pole signs continue to be prohibited in Heartland Township unless it's for a home occupation sign. Because the idea was that if you wanted to do a tasteful two-post sign in your front yard in the CA districts, you know, advertising your accounting services or something like that, you could do that. We don't necessarily want to require that folks have to put in a monument sign like we would require for our commercial businesses. I guess I'll pause there and see if there's any thoughts, comments, questions on the proposed home occupation amendment.
How often does this come up for you? Is this a hot topic?
I wouldn't call it a hot topic. Every so often, we do get folks who, like I'm describing, just run a small business out of their home, and they want to do a little bit of advertising, and oftentimes, it's more they want to do a temporary sign out in the front yard, you know, a seasonal sign, whether they're, I keep using the tax services example, but you know, tax season, you know, February, March, April. And so this wouldn't necessarily be promoting a temporary seasonal sign, but it would be more, okay, if you want to run a business out of your home, we would allow you to have some signage, but it would have to be small, it would have to be tasteful, and it would have to be consistent with a residential character of where you are. It's not something that comes up on a daily basis, but it comes up enough that I think it's worth having some language in the zoning ordinance. Right now, the zoning ordinance is vague. It says in a home occupation, you can have a sign, but then it doesn't really go on to say, well, what kind of sign is that and what's allowed, so it's worth addressing.
Dave, is it mentioned backlighting at all or front lighting on it?
It says non-illuminated. That was the intent.
It says on the one for the, it's fastened to the house, it doesn't on the...
Window?
Oh yeah, it says non-illuminated.
Non-illuminated sign.
On the pole sign. Dave, since...
But you bring up a good question, because what I think we wanted to have it say, and I'm trying to read fast, oh, freestanding, yeah, now, not illuminated, okay. So to answer your question, Mr. Murphy, the language is set up so that it's not illuminated. You don't, in a residential district, we don't want to have the illuminated sign.
You can have a home occupation in just about every zoning district, residential district we have, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would, I don't have a problem with this. A lot of these will be controlled by neighborhood associations, whether they do or don't permit them. So if an association like mine doesn't permit this...
Correct.
It's not going to happen, no matter what the township says.
Correct, and this wouldn't supersede any bylaws that you agreed to when you bought your house.
Probably won't see them in a lot of our, I'm going to maybe say our middle to newer subs, middle-aged to newer subs that have those types of things.
Correct, but on some of the ones that are maybe a little bit older that don't have the bylaws, or maybe don't have as strict bylaws, what this does is it does offer some protection on some of those, you know, our suburban residential zoning districts, and some of the zoning districts that have the more density, the smaller lot sizes, where it's probably not appropriate to have a freestanding sign in every other front yard. They would be able to have a small window sign or a small sign next to the front door, but only in the CA district would they be allowed to have a freestanding monument sign in the yard.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest on the double I, the second point, a permanent window sign is described herein. The window signs can be either 10 or 25% of a window.
Yes.
And, you know, there are some houses that have big picture windows in the front, and that sign might get a little big.
Yes.
So I would like to see us maybe limit a maximum square footage, like we are on the one that's mounted to the house, and like we are the pole sign in the yard. So rather than say you can have 10%, if it's a temporary one, 25% of it's permanent on a window sign, maybe we can say that, but up to a maximum of X square feet. And it seems like it shouldn't get too big to me.
And there is a maximum, right, in the basic definition for window signs?
There is, but it's based on the size of the window.
Yeah, it's a percentage.
So I thought, you take your pick, you got a nice big picture window in the front, you could end up with a decent-sized sign in there in a residential neighborhood.
Or greater than 20 square feet, it said two.
But that's big.
But that's way too big.
That's way too big for a residential neighborhood.
Well, five by four.
That's big, that's big. I mean, we're saying one on your house can only be two square feet. Why would you let them have a five-by-four sign in there if they had a big window?
So maybe there's a jumping off point on that, because I think it's a good suggestion. So if we're saying two square feet for a tasteful little sign, you know, most likely next to your front door, is there any reason to go bigger than that for a sign hanging in your window? And if there is, I suppose that's sort of the baseline. You can have a two-square-foot sign next to your door that says, you know, Tom Murphy, Attorney, but I just promoted you.
I don't know.
If it's in your window, should it be bigger than that?
I don't see why it would need to be any larger. I mean, if the exterior sign is that, why would the window sign need to be any larger?
And my big concern for it is some of these neighborhoods. You got little half-acre lots or whatever, quarter-acre lots, and all of a sudden, some guy wants to put a big old sign in his window three months a year because he's running a tax service. I don't think that's right. I'm fine with the same size. If you can't mount it on your house, put it in your window, I don't know what you think.
I agree.
I agree. You all right on that?
Yeah, I'm all right. But where are we at with the lighting on it? I do see now I'm on the right page now, but in I, and then III, it's mentioned non-illuminated. But in double I?
It's not.
It's not mentioned.
I think it's worth saying it there, too. Unless you feel differently, I don't know that an illuminated window sign is necessarily appropriate in a residential district.
I agree.
I mean, I could see...
Yeah, because you could do a light box.
I was going to say you could do a scrolling sign.
A what sign?
No, because we don't permit those anywhere.
Those are just permitted, or prohibited in general.
Only. What's not permitted?
A scrolling sign, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you could do a light box.
You could do a light box.
There's neon signs, someone could have a sign out, you know, on the ground shining up at it, or a light outside shining in it.
Yeah. Any other comments on the home occupation signs?
So where did we conclude at with the sign size?
Well, he'll forward in there. For the window sign, I heard two square feet, just like you would be allowed on the outside of the building. And I didn't hear any discussion on the size of the freestanding sign in the CA district. We're saying six square feet, we're saying 10 feet off the front lot line, 10 feet from either side, and no taller than five feet. And we didn't get too specific on what the design of it looks like, and I think Sue brought this up. You know, we want to give people the opportunity to get a little creative. If they want to engrave something in a rock in their front yard or something like that, I mean, we don't necessarily want to limit that. Can I kind of summarize some of your thoughts on that one, or, you know, give people an opportunity to, you know, if they want to do some nice woodwork sign, something like that, we don't want to say that, nope, it has to be made out of brick.
Well, many of those properties are on roads that are traveled at a higher rate of speed, so a little bigger sign in a little bigger lot is probably more appropriate.
Let's see, do you know what the size of the, those temporary for-sale signs are, you know, the little, how big those are?
They have to be 18 inches square with gas, I think, like...
Six square feet?
Like for a light type of sign?
I'm just wondering if...
Yeah, probably two. It's the easy, go to the hardware store, grab a, you know, ready-made sign and put it in your yard.
If we required, they'd be...
No, if it prohibits it, if the six-square-feet prohibits it, if those signs are bigger than six-square feet, maybe...
I mean, they're probably, I guess, I don't know, two by two, I think they are maybe. I mean, I'm sure they vary, but...
Two by three? I think it would be nine, six-square feet, so I'm all right.
I mean, we do say double poles or other solid base, which I would like to think would eliminate just somebody with the wire sticking in the ground sign. I mean, something permanent. It is what we're going for, if there's a better way to word it. We were trying to, I remember we had this discussion with the ORC, we wanted to put in language that encouraged a quality-looking sign without being too restrictive and allowing that, you know, kind of that creativity that we...
Yeah. I don't know how you put a solid base on a six-square-foot sign.
Well, so the six-square feet is the sign area. So if they, you know, if, just like we measure commercial monument signs, I mean, you could have a base, and then six-square feet on top of it, as long as the height didn't exceed...
Five feet.
There, yeah.
Permanent.
And it does say permanent.
Right.
You know, we pictured the four-by-four coming up, with the four-by-four coming out with a sign kind of swinging from it.
That's how I picture it.
I'm just thinking of the temporary guys that might want to put something out there, seasonal, you know?
There's, I mean, we do, just Heartland Township in general does limit temporary seasonal signs other than for things like roadside farm stands, things like that. So, you know, the guy who's doing snow plowing a couple months out of the year, based on this, wouldn't be allowed to put out a temporary, you know, snow plowing services sign.
No, but he could put the poles out and hang the sign up three months a year.
Yeah.
Which some...
Might, yeah. I don't know. I mentioned to the cable guy that it was doing that, and here's the thing, it's like when you go to take your car to the mechanic and it stops making the noise, well, when he came in here, it stopped doing it, so. He's probably listening to us right now, so hopefully, there's a fix to it, hopefully he's on it.
There you go. Any other comments on the home occupation signs?
All good.
I have one question.
Yeah.
It's really, it's just at the end of it, it talks about the setbacks, just to be clear, a setback at least 10 feet from the front lot line and 15 from the side lot line. I was just, if you go back one page, reading through 526(c), it just kind of jumped out at me, the setback there, a setback minimum of 10 feet from any property line or public street right-of-way. Is there a reason to add the public street right-of-way and be more similar in the two areas?
It would be making it more consistent, I would agree. Generally, though, your front property line is the...
Right-of-way?
Is the right-of-way line. That's where we measure setbacks from, the public right-of-way. Or in the case of, say, a private road, then we measure from the private road easement.
And actually, there, it's 10 feet from the right-of-way and 15 from, or 10 from the front. So the front lot line is actually the right-of-way, those are...
Generally, yes.
One and the same.
Yep. Unless you have a private road situation, then the terminology is different. And the 15 feet is kind of a, what we settle on as being a reasonable number, just so your sign is not getting too close to your neighbor's property line. Again, only in the CA district.
I guess it's the same then, is... Okay, it's just the street right-of-way that kind of, that I noticed that stood out. Okay.
Okay, page three?
Well, each one starts over with over numbering.
Page, page one, number two, one.
Good. I assume you want to talk about portable temporary signs in the LC, STR district?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So in this case, we had a lot of discussion very early on with this of, is the Heartland Village area, and to maybe a lesser degree, our Partialville Settlement area, a little bit of a different commercial area than our M59 corridor, our old 23 commercial corridor? In that, our hope is it will continue to be a more of a pedestrian-oriented, low-speed, more of a downtown area. And what we discussed and what we've found is generally in the successful downtowns that we want to, that we want to promote, there is some allowances for these temporary signs out in front of these businesses. Oftentimes, the justification being that these businesses, because of their downtown nature, are very close to the front lot line and don't even have the opportunity to put out a freestanding monument sign like the properties along, say, M59. So the general consensus of the Planning Commission and the board was, yes, we would want to maybe create the option for some temporary sandwich board-style signs within our village area and within our Partialville area, which is generally where our STR and our LC zoning districts are. So what the ordinance review committee and the planning department staff worked together on was providing some allowances for them. So again, we would be changing the definition, excuse me, the prohibition on portable signs to say portable signs are still prohibited in Heartland Township unless otherwise specified in this section in the LC and STR zoning districts. So then we go on to say, we would be offering two options for portable temporary signs in those zoning districts. One would be, we already allow projecting signs, so if you picture a downtown building that has a sign sticking out, you know, off the front of it, right, we would allow, you could have one of those kinds of signs anyway, but now what we would allow is you could hang a temporary sign from it. So, you know, your permanent sign says the name of your restaurant, and maybe the sign hanging beneath it says what that night's special is, for example. As long as you still meet the minimum height clearance on that sign, and as long as you meet the minimum sign area overall, and as long as that temporary sign that you're hanging is consistent and matches the permanent sign, then we would allow something like that. That would be one allowance for the businesses within those two zoning districts, one temporary sign allowance. The other one is a freestanding portable sign. And the way we've structured this is we would either allow a, what we call a sandwich board style sign or an A-frame sign, but a quality one, not one of the lower-end ones. We would look for the businesses to put up a quality style sign, and we try to incorporate some design guidelines there. Or they could also have a pedestal-style sign, which is a sign that usually has the solid weighted base on it with the sign mounted to the top of it. Both of them portable. There would be provisions in place for when they can be out there, it's only during business hours, they have to be so close to the front door, they have to be limited to a certain size, a certain height. They have to, as I mentioned, they have to be kind of of a quality design, quality materials. Again, non-illuminated, they have to maintain a clear zone along the sidewalk so that you're not blocking wheelchairs and strollers, things like that. Can't obstruct building entrances. And then the other language that we put in there that we thought was a good idea from some comparable ordinances we saw, is on a lot of these properties, the sign that they would be wanting to do, they would have to put it in the public right-of-way because they have no front yard. So what we're saying is, okay, if you are going to put it in the public right-of-way, then you have to indemnify and hold harmless Heartland Township, so if, you know, God forbid that sign gets picked up in the wind and hits somebody in the head, Heartland Township is not somehow liable because it's in the public right-of-way. So as part of the permitting process for a sign like this, that would be one of the requirements, is we have to, we have to ensure that we're not liable for that sign if you are going to put it in the public right-of-way.
What form does that come in, then? Just a rider on their insurance that we just verify?
Yep.
Dave, on the temporary panel, the first one that hangs off the projecting sign, I know it says it's meant for like a purpose of advertising a special feature, current or an event. Does it still need to have a time limit on it in any way, like the A-frame is, you know, hours of operation? Should that have some kind of time limit on it, or no? Are we just going to have a permanent five-square-foot extension on every projecting?
It's a fair question. I don't know that we, I don't know that we talked about that. It's certainly worth talking about here. The way it's written right now, no. That temporary kind of swinging portable sign hanging from your projecting sign, it does not say that it could only be on there during business hours.
Dave, you might already have that. If you go to, go a few pages forward underneath portable sandwich board signs in the Village?
Yeah, it is on the sandwich board.
The last, well, so different rights, maybe copied from somewhere else largely intended to be displayed during business hours. Maybe you could just steal that for now.
I'm happy to do that, I just want to be sure that that's what we wanted to do.
If that's necessary, that would be an idea.
Well, you could see somebody hanging a five-square-foot sign that says, stop in for our daily specials.
Right.
Just leave it there, and leave it there permanently, okay?
Yeah, we've just increased the...
We just made the sign five-square feet bigger.
That's a good point. Yeah, so Mr. Murphy's right, we probably just recycle the same language that we have in the next section.
Then you're asking these people to take that sign down every night then, right?
That's right.
Right.
Well, it would be easier to take it down every night and probably encourage the A-frame versus having to monitor if you said can only be up for five days, because who's going to monitor five days?
Yeah, what harm is it really to have it up there permanently?
Well, then you just might as well make, you might as well make the projection sign five-day, five-square feet bigger.
Well, not everybody's going to pull it up.
I was trying to say.
Dave, on that, on the temporary panel, it kind of says it can happen in the LC district, but shouldn't it also say the STR? Do you kind of go back to that section? Does it cover the STR?
Again, another good question. What I would maybe want to verify is that, if you want to bear with me, we may say that projecting signs are only allowed in the LC district to begin with, perhaps. That's the answer. So right now, we only allow projecting signs in LC anyway.
Okay. And Dave, how big can those projecting signs be? I was just curious, when I was trying to do the math backwards to understand how big their panel can be? Just trying to understand if they can be no more than 25%. How big are projecting signs?
Have to be eight feet off the ground, no more than 20 square feet.
So a quarter of that is five?
Yeah, so there's, that's how we got the five feet, five-square feet.
So if you still have to keep the eight feet, you're going to have to really mount your projecting sign high if you're going to hang a five-square-foot sign below it.
I mean, you would have to plan ahead for this.
Did you follow what communities that do that? I mean, I think it's fine, but I just, did you copy somebody's or did we create it?
This may be one where we sort of came up with it on our own. If we lifted it from someone else, I'm trying, I don't remember.
I'm just thinking if you, it would be way up there.
Well, tall guys like me would appreciate that.
Well, the bottom of it's eight, so 20-square-foot sign, depending on how you swing that, because is there a maximum projection off the building, or no?
Need how far can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There does not appear to be.
Twenty foot by one.
And the reason I need to check every time is, in my time here, I've yet to have someone apply for one of these, so that's why I don't, I haven't memorized yet.
Yeah, I don't know. I just was curious. And the time issue isn't a big deal if you don't want it. I was just thinking, we just added five more square feet, because there's nothing that says take it down.
Well, I still think your point's valid. Either let's change the ordinance.
Well, it is, but Jeff's point is good, too, because every night at the end of the day, are you going to pull your six or eight-foot ladder off and haul it down, and then haul it back out in the morning to put it up?
If you want the sign out.
I would suppose if it, if it's good enough...
I think that is your point. Now, it's not a simple thing like... Now, it's, it's not a simple thing like an A-frame. You can just walk out, grab it, move it inside the door and put it in. So I.
I would probably put it on a rope and cinch it up, but I didn't cinch it down. It was me.
And we have, we tend to take our sign ordinance pretty seriously around here, so. But like you say, nobody's even applied for one yet, so.
So may not.
I don't know if it's a big issue.
Yeah.
But this, these are all enforcement issues anyway.
They are.
You put this kind of language in there so that if something becomes a problem, you can enforce it.
That's exactly right. Now, you know, I, it's, I don't see it as being something where we're going to be, you know, monitoring it on night by night by night basis, but if we have reason to think that it's, it's been up there much longer than it's meant to be, then, then it's worth the conversation and that's where we have the language in place to, to enforce it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on projecting signs or whatever we call them at that point? Okay, last one is donor construction and donor sign recognition signs.
So, it might be worth mentioning how this all got started. So, our, the Heartland Deering Historical Museum has put a sign up probably around this time last year, maybe earlier in the summer, recognizing the donors who contributed to a rehabilitation project on, on the museum. Obviously, a very old building, put up a new roof, new siding, new paint. They did some work on the foundation and they put up a sign recognizing the, the contractors who worked on it and the suppliers who, who supplied the materials for it. Technically, a sign like that is not currently prohibited in the Heartland Township zoning ordinance. We started having discussions of making the museum take it down and then the discussion became, well, do we want to take a look at whether we want to allow something like that? That's where this ordinance came from, is, is Heartland Township recognizing that there is a place for some of our public entities, our quasi-public, our nonprofit entities to have an opportunity to express their thanks to the, to the donors who deserve to be recognized. So, in so doing, what we've done here is slightly amended the current definition for a construction sign, just to make it clear that the construction signs that we currently allow anyway, recognizing the contractors and the subcontractors on a, on a development project, they could, if they so choose, add donors to that project. And they could anyway, but it was worth adding that to the, the definition for a construction sign. Then we've added a new definition for a donor recognition sign because currently we do not have such a definition. So, providing that definition in, in section two for what is a donor recognition sign. From there, as I mentioned earlier, we would amend the, the prohibition, the current prohibition on pole signs to, because these donor recognition signs, we envision them as being a pole sign potentially. So we want to make sure that we state that we continue to prohibit pole signs except for things like home occupation, donor recognition. So then we essentially have two types of donor recognition signs that we're envisioning. One is the, the example very comparable to the museum. So if a museum, the music hall, a church, a private school maybe, wanted to put up a, a sign recognizing the donors to a, a project, then they would be able to do so. But there would be limits to how big it could be, how tall it could be, where it could be on the property. And what generated a lot of discussion with the ordinance review committee was the duration of the sign. How long can these be up? How long is long enough for everybody to get their due credit for the, for their contributions to a, a worthy cause? So what we, what we agreed upon was it has to be a project for which a, a building permit would, would be required. So if, if, if somebody put on, donated a fresh coat of paint on a building, we don't know that that's necessarily worthy of, of the donor recognition sign. But if you're talking a major rehabilitation like what happened in the museum, then that requires permits, then you would be allowed to have a sign. So, the sign could go up six months after the permit and it would be, be allowed to remain up six months after the final approval of, of the project. But in no case could it stay up longer than 18 months. And in no case could, and then once the sign comes down, you have to wait six more months before you can put the next one back up. So that they can't, you know, take one down and then the next day pull the permit for the next project and, and put it right back up. We also had some language in there that said, you know, we want you to be able to recognize your donors, but we're not necessarily looking for these to become advertising signs. So we have some prohibition that says, free of advertising, we're not looking for websites and phone numbers for the contractors that, that donated their services necessarily, but their name, their logo, that would be allowed. And, and some language saying it needs to be compatible with the project and it needs to have a unified aesthetic, that sort of language, just to hopefully ensure that, that the sign that gets put up is, is of a quality design. I may pause there and, because, because the, the next part is, is kind of a different animal, so I may pause there and see if there's any discussion on, on that approach.
Does anyone notice the sign that Dave's talking about?
Oh, yeah. Well, I do because it's my job to notice.
Yeah.
No, I, I have seen them around, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's on the south side of the building. Yeah, I noticed it just uniquely last week.
It's been there for a little while and, I mean, obviously, we like the museum and they're an important part of this community and we recognize that there, there probably is a place for a sign. Not necessarily that one. I, I think we talked about that one's on the tall side probably, but we, we agree that there is a place for something like that as long as they go up and come down within a reasonable amount of time. The other one, part of this conversation is the township, as we're all well aware, has opened two new large parks in the last year or so. And part of what the township probably wants to do is get sponsors or donors for, for those parks. And what the township envisions is a, something of a permanent structure as, as you enter into the park and then we could get donations from local businesses to put, put a medallion or a plaque or something on that sign for up to a, a year, I believe. Yeah, one year. Recognizing their donation to the park and the, the structure itself could remain there permanently and we would be required to put some nice landscaping around it. But then on a yearly basis, various medallions, plaques could go up and come down to recognize the local businesses who want to provide donations to capital improvements in, in our township parks. So that's what this language is, is, is meant to allow for. Now, the legitimate question that could come up is, why would Heartland Township be allowed to keep their donor recognition sign up permanently, but the museum, say, has to take it down within a certain amount of time? And the rationale behind that is that the, the parks don't have a, a building in which that they could permanently install a plaque, you know, on, on, as you, you see this a lot, right? As you enter the front door of a new school or a new building, you, you see some sort of a, a nice monument to everyone who contributed to that project, right? And, and the museum or a church or anyone else could do that very same thing on the inside of their building. The difference with the park is, we don't have that option to do it within our building. So that's the justification for being able to have these sponsorship donor recognition signs within, within our township parks. And be able to have the frame of them up permanently and then on a yearly basis be able to swap out the, the businesses or the individuals who, who wish to donate and then be recognized on those signs. So again, we have some, some language in terms of what the height and what the size and what the location of, of that sign would be and duration, again, one year for, for each donor. Now, they could obviously re-up every year, but the, the sign would have to be renewed on a yearly basis. And, you know, some language on where it would be allowed to be located on the park and this, we would be required to put the same landscaping feature around the base of that sign as anyone would be required to put around the base of any freestanding sign. And again, the language that it needs to be compatible and aesthetically pleasing and all those things that would require that we put up something that's quality in, in nature.
So why, if, if we're going to allow our parks to have another permanent monument sign, why don't we just point them to the monument standards, monument sign standards at that point? In your section D there?
Yes.
Instead of listing all the standards, now they've got two standards to abide by, one for a monument sign, one for a permanent donor sign. But really, there are two monument signs, right? One's just going to have changeable.
I mean, so in reality, if, if you can picture, if you've seen it, as you enter into, I'm pointing the wrong way. As you enter into Heartland Village, there's that sign that says, "Welcome to the Historic Village of Heartland." And then there's the medallions around it of, you know, the Lions Club and the Rotary and then Community Council and all those, those good groups. I think what the board's envisioning is a sign more like that, a quality sign, but still a two-post sign with medallions on it than they're envisioning a true monument sign with a masonry base and, and something of that, I think. And whether it's the right approach or not, I, I suppose that's part of your decision. But the idea is that the donor recognition signs within the parks would not be quite up to that standard for the, the main entry monument sign. Something a little bit simpler to, like this one heading into the village to, to recognize any businesses that want to make a contribution to improvements to the park.
And do we have any standards for replacement of that sign then?
Yes. Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Oh, right, the first one, yeah, 10 feet.
Yeah, 10 feet. So, the, the same as, as any other freestanding sign. For whatever it's worth, the conversations we've had with, with the board and with our, our park site plan, planning committee is, I think they envision something a little bit further back as you enter into the park.
Yeah.
Not right up front. Because I, I think that then might detract from.
Right.
The look of the, the main entry feature.
That's what I was thinking too, so.
Yeah, that's my concern.
But how many parks do we have to deal with not hearing any? Couple. Who's going to oversee that administration of that sign? Exactly.
It would be a permit. And then for whatever it's worth, I mean, Heartland Township did pull a, a sign permit for the, the new sign over at the Hero Center. The fire department pulled one for the new sign at the fire. I mean, we do hold ourselves to our own rules.
Anything else on that? Dave, any more comments on signs for tonight from you or anything to add?
I don't think so, only to, I guess, repeat that we're not looking for any formal action here tonight. We've got some more to bring to you in the very near future. Again, those thermometer fundraising signs that we talked about, hopefully we have some direction from the board on that. And we want to get together with the ordinance review committee at least one more time to discuss where we are with commercial agriculture signage. And then our hope is to bring them all forward to you, including these ones that you're already seeing here, at a September meeting and hopefully at that point we'll be ready to set a public hearing and, and keep the process moving along.
It may be on a different note. Where does the, the, the signs that go up for political candidates, is that, where is that held, that information on, what is the ordinance?
So that's, those are considered exempt signs from, from requiring a sign permit. However, there are regulations for location, duration, so they can only go up for, for so long and they have to come down so long after the election. You know, those are protected more than commercial signs by, you know, freedom of speech. So we need to be a little more careful on those. However, we do have the discretion to, if they're, if they're positioned such that they're impeding traffic or they're blocking vision of traffic, I mean, a lot of times they congregate on the, on the corners as we all see. And then that's, that's a danger if you're trying to look this way to see if there's cars coming on 59 and there's 20 political signs that are blocking your view. That's obviously a hazard and at that point, we have the discretion to, to remove them as a safety thing. But in general, as long as they're placed in the right spots, then they're, they're protected by, by free speech and then that's reflected in our zoning ordinance.
Do they have to be on private property or can they be in public right of way or?
What our zoning ordinance says, they, they can only be in the public right of way if they are not impeding traffic or I forget how it's phrased, but they're not posing a, a threat to traffic. So, there's some discretion there for myself and my staff. And we did throughout the election time and we will be doing it again in November-ish. You know, if we see them congregating on the corners where they just become a danger, then we just, we either take them, bring them back here or we've also taken them, just set them in a pile right on the corner. If they, if they want to come back and get them, they can. But at least we're sending the message that they can't be here.
So you guys, the township polices those signs?
We do.
If there are circumstances, if they're up to them.
And we, and, and to the credit of at least some of the campaigns, they, they either called ahead of time to see what the local rules were or once they saw that we'd taken some of theirs down, then they'd call us and say, "Sorry about that, what are the rules?" And for the most part, I think we, we kept it under control. Just in my travels, I know in other communities, it does get out of control. So, we, we do police it, we do the best we can with it. But we have to be careful because there is freedom of speech implications there.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave or comments on signs? Okay, I guess we'll move on. There is no public left, so we will move on to item 10, planner's report.
The township board is hoping to have a joint meeting with the planning commission and we're looking at the planning commission's September 25th meeting date. So circle that one on your calendars. That is after the board's retreat, which is in the middle of September. And at that point, they should have a better idea of what sign going to be on the strategic plan for the coming year and therefore what on that strategic plan is going to impact the planning commission so that the follow-up to their board retreat is to meet with this planning commission and discuss those items. So, hopefully, we won't have any, any major action items on the 25th because I think the board would like to have that joint meeting start right at seven. And as it stands right now, I, I don't know that there would be anything else on the agenda. We did receive this, our residential market potential analysis. This was a, a firm out of New Jersey that, that we hired that does these very reports and, and does a very good job with them. And I, I know we discussed this a few months ago when we discussed our pending updates to the comprehensive plan and we knew that this was going to be a major component of it. So now that we have it, at our next meeting, which will be September 11th, I'm going to have this on the agenda and a, a summary of this. And the summary is going to touch on the highlights that will impact our decisions, your decisions, as we look at that update to the future land use plan. I mean, this has some very good recommendations of the, the type of housing that Heartland Township could, could certainly absorb. And then it will be, part of the planning commission's job is, is to think about where in the township might those types of housing be most appropriate. So, we'll be, we'll be talking more about that at our next meeting. You'll recall the addition to Covert Biological Industries on Old 23. They have their stamping sets and their land use permit and they're probably going to get going on that one very soon. I know their, their contractor is eager to get that one going, so hopefully we'll see some, some activity over there very soon, once they get their building permits from Livingston County. The township looks, things are looking good for a potential sale of our sewer properties along M-59. There's 80 acres on the south side of 59 at Pleasant Valley and then 30 acres on the north side at what, at that point is Fenton Road. We're very close on that one. The board's going to be talking about a, a purchase agreement this coming Tuesday and things are looking very positive there. So, hopefully that gets sold and then we start seeing some development plans for that in the very near future. And that's, that's exciting stuff. We are looking to form a task force for our pending Parks and Recreation Plan and if any planning commissioners are inclined to be a part of that task force, we would encourage that. We're looking at probably four meetings over the next four or five months to discuss that Parks and Recreation Plan. And we're going to be doing some other public input as well, but the task force, just kind of like what we did with the Safer Roads and Pathways Task Force, the Parks and Recreation Task Force would sort of be steering that process all the way to completion with the hope that we would get a new Parks and Recreation Master Plan adopted by our township board in February of, of next year. It's worth noting that we've been in discussions with the owner of the new Taco Bell, which you may have seen is now open. And it's worth noting that he was extremely complimentary of this planning commission and for what it's worth, the township and the staff and the planning department. It was all very positive. He said that coming into Heartland Township, he heard dreadful stories of how this is going to be a horrible process and it was going to take forever and it was going to, that we were going to change the rules halfway through and all these terrible things. And he found that to be the complete opposite of that. He said it was a very positive experience. He complimented this planning commission and particularly those who took a road trip down to Romulus to look at the story that they were building in Romulus. He said, "Nobody else in any other community would do something like that." So that's just very indicative of how dedicated you are to your service. So, it's just worth you hearing that and it's nice to hear it on our end too, that, you know, here's someone who made a major investment in our community and, and has nothing but good things to say about it. So, it's worth bringing up here. And another, one last note, I guess, we, we've had some very preliminary interest from two prospective business owners who both are interested in opening a, a new restaurant in Heartland Township and are interested in the liquor licenses that the township is currently holding. The township is down to two quota liquor licenses. The last one we gave away was to Tony Saccos. So now we're down to two. We will, our township board will want to be very selective with what we do with those, particularly given the development potential of some of our unfinished commercial developments. But there, there is interest there and there's probably going to be more discussion on that and some of that discussion will maybe at the planning commission level. So, perhaps more to come on that, but it's always good to hear that there's, there's So perhaps more to come on that, but it's always good to hear that there's interest in new business. That's what I have. Have a good Labor Day weekend, and I'm probably going to head over to the football game, and I don't know if anybody else is, but hopefully they're winning.
Okay. Committee reports, comments, anyone? All right. Motion to adjourn, please.
Move to adjourn.
Support. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, it's a motion carries. Thanks. Good night.